All right, well, let's get started. The time is now twelve seventeen. This is a meeting of the Public Safety Subcommittee talking about the rules, rules and responsibility of the newly created Police Commission. Today, we are joined, my name is Councilor Victor Davila. Chair, Committee Member, Councilor Fenton and Councilor Whitfield were unable to join us today. However, we are joined by Councilor Hurst, Councilor Perez, Councilor Letterman. Thank you for being here today. Attorney G, I thank you for joining us. I do realize that you are filling in for all intended purposes. I have to say that, Attorney G, that, to the administration that I'm sure is listening. I'm a little disappointed. I'm a little disappointed because I set up this meeting a while back. I got confirmation from five commissioners, four or five commissioners, and Judge Payne. And nobody showed up. And I thank you, Attorney G, for being here. I realize that you were probably just thrown into the fire, so to speak. So I will, I'm not happy, I'm not a happy cop. Not a happy cop. I'm extremely disappointed. You know, oftentimes I have to say that my job as a counselor has many facets, including, are we, excuse me, are we recording? I want this to be recorded. Are we recording, Kelly? Let's keep it focused.
It's recording, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Susan. So my job as a city councilor, I'm not a rubber stamp, and I think everybody knows that. I'm not anti anybody, I'm pro Springfield. The, and I'm really, really annoyed right now. Not only is this a disrespect towards the City Council, the disrespect that was the Public Safety Committee, but it creates an atmosphere of distrust and that we cannot work. I, we are very busy, extremely busy, and if we set up this meeting, I expect somebody to be here. It's an insult, not only to the City Council, to this committee, but it's an insult to the residents of the city of Springfield that nobody from the Police Commission, that Judge Payne did not show up. And Attorney Gia, anyways, again, thank you for sort of saving the day. So I want to be extremely clear how ticked off I am, how upset I am, and how disappointed I am.
If I may be heard, Councilor Davila?
Yes, your name.
Um, I apologize for your frustration. I'm not sure. Um, I believe that there may have been a mix-up. Um, I received, I was copied on an email sent by Chief of Staff Tom Ash on Thursday. Um, and I'm looking at it, it was sent to your, excuse me, it was sent to you and copied on, it was also Superintendent Claproot and City Solicitor John Payne, which stated that the Board of Police Commissioners wanted to reschedule today's meeting because they have not been up and running just yet. So their first sort of organizational meeting is scheduled for this evening at four thirty. Um, and because they have not been up and running yet, they wanted to reschedule this meeting. So the, the Board of Police Commissioners wanted to reschedule for maybe thirty days out, um, if that is amenable to you. But that even, and I don't know if you didn't receive that email, but that was sent, I'm looking at it, it was sent on Thursday, the seventh, at eleven twenty-three.
Yeah, Attorney G, I did receive that letter, but no, it was not amenable to me for a couple of reasons. One, I have five confirmation, five people, Judge Payne and other commissioners that did come in to attend it. So I even gave them two choices of two days, today and tomorrow. Everybody chose today at twelve o'clock. I rearranged my schedule to be here now at twelve o'clock. So no, it's not amenable to me. And the way, as far as I understand it, the chairman of the, of the committee is the one that calls and cancels the meeting. Nobody is going to cancel my meeting. That's very clear. It's the second time this happens, or that is attempted to happen, it will not happen a third time. So yes, I did receive the letter, and no, it was not amenable to me, and that's why we're here today.
Well, I cannot, um, I, I can't speak to, um, sort of canceling the meeting, I want to be clear on that. But I will say that I did communicate to the commissioners that the meeting was canceled because I was under the impression that it was canceled based upon the email that Tom Ash sent to you. So I want to be, I want to be clear that they're not attending is because I suggested that they not attend.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's.
As far as canceling, that's, I'm just, I was copied on the email.
Yeah, so, uh, before I go on, Attorney G, I would like to recognize Attorney Whitfield. Attorney Whitfield, thank you for joining us. Attorney Whitfield, just to update you, Attorney G has been kind enough to fill in. Unfortunately, nobody showed up from the Police Commission or Judge Payne. And we're just having a discussion with regards surrounding that. Uh, Attorney G, uh, but so we all know the meeting is not canceled until the, the appropriate elected person cancels the meeting. Uh, and so I just have a question. You said that you suggested that it canceled, then why is that? Why did you suggest it canceled?
No, I suggested that they not appear because I thought the meeting was canceled. So I told them that they didn't have to appear because I thought the meeting was canceled based upon Tom Ash's, uh, his email to you.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. And I know, uh, Attorney, Chief of Staff Attorney Ash, the mayor, and everybody on the planet knows they don't get to cancel the City Council meetings, or especially my meeting. Uh, thank you, Attorney G. And so again, Attorney G, my frustration is not aimed at you, it's an aim at the, what I see as an insult right now. And I'm not a happy cop. Um, anyways, uh, let's try to sort of salvage this moment. I will call another meeting. I do expect everybody to show. Counselor Whitfield?
I'm sorry, I missed the introduction. I'm sorry, I was late, but I was on another meeting. Um, why is the meeting canceled?
So no, the meeting is not canceled, Counselor Whitfield. Uh, I had called the meeting, I had given them two dates to choose, today and tomorrow. Uh, everybody chose today. Uh, we have four or five commissioners responded, I have Judge Payne responded that they will attend. Uh, I did receive a letter, as Attorney G just pointed out, from Chief of Staff Tom Ash, uh, telling me that they were going to meet today at four thirty. Uh, in preview of that, I decided to keep the meeting as they had confirmed that we'll be attending. And nobody has shown up. Apparently, if Attorney G stated there was some sort of a misunderstanding, and nobody's here. Uh, and so I, I was just reaffirming that, um, the meeting is not canceled until the appropriate elected official cancels. And, uh, I was expressing that my frustration, because everyone's time is very valuable, and I, I am, uh, I think this is a disrespect and insult to, um, not only the City Council, this committee, uh, Counselor Whitfield, but also to the residents of Springfield. Uh, Counselor Hurst?
Um, I have one more comment, if you care. I, I, I'm also frustrated, because this is my lunch break, um, that I'm on to be on the meeting, but also because they're meeting at four thirty, that's the same time that we have an audit meeting today. So some of us probably won't be able to attend their meeting at four thirty to see what they're doing. And then right after that, we have a Finance Subcommittee meeting at five thirty. And so it's going to be difficult for a lot of councillors to attend, and their meeting is in person. It's not, it's not even being Zoomed, so, um, it is frustrating because I, I did have some questions for the commission. Um, that we just can't get answered today, I guess, so I'll just look forward to the rescheduling, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, and I, I guess I'll just piggyback off of the frustration of both of you all. Um, you know, I, originally, Victor, when you had started to, uh, you had let them know, I guess it was on, what, Monday or Tuesday, that you were going to have your meeting set up for this Monday. It appeared as though, uh, they wanted to have a meeting on last Thursday. Uh, and that meeting, for whatever reason, was postponed. Uh, my, my frustration, Attorney G, and you can certainly convey this to, to whoever's doing the organizing. I don't, I don't know who does their organizing, who sets their schedule, uh, who is sort of being the liaison in terms of advising them to set up meetings. All of these, I think, are, are great questions, how often they're going to meet, uh, and so forth. Um, you know, so I don't know who's responsible, but I do know that I did see a meeting that was scheduled for Thursday. Um, and I don't, uh, it, it seems as though it was postponed. I raised issue with that meeting because, one, we only gave the public forty-eight hours notice. And it would seem to me that something of this magnitude, we would give them a bit more time than the short amount of notice that is required by the state. And it, it also would seem to me that we would give them every opportunity to attend. And then on top of that, uh, I, I did see that it was executive session, it, it was an executive session meeting. I've come to understand that that might have been accidental and that all of the items that were listed under that, the agenda items under that meeting were not supposed to be listed under executive session. And so, uh, you know, and then you compile that with, once they canceled the meeting, uh, they in turn give another forty-eight hours notice, still no Zoom link. Uh, and then they're not present today. And so, um, to at the very least answer some of the questions that, that I've had, and it sounds like they might not be available to the council for another thirty days. Um, on top of that, it just seems like they, they were appointed close to a month and a half ago. And for them to only be having their first meeting, considering all that has to be done, seems like they're behind the eight ball. Uh, because there, there, there are some things that need to be discussed, I would imagine, as it relates to the Police Department. So, uh, you know, I don't know what we can do about that now, Counselor Davila. You know, I don't know if, if we can schedule a meeting, uh, maybe sooner than, than thirty days, just to kind of get an idea as to what is happening. But I think, you know, Attorney G, uh, the biggest thing that I would stress is that folks want to be uh, as knowledgeable about what is happening within the, uh, you know, the, the, the Police Commission as possible, so that we can in turn convey it to our, uh, to our constituents. And certainly, the less transparent that things appear on their face, the more difficult it is for us to sell the Board of Police Commissioners to our constituents that they will be, uh, more transparent than what we had previously. And so, you know, to the extent that you could just convey that to them, uh, and whoever is advising them, uh, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Uh, again, uh, I would like to, um, Attorney G, uh, when they meet today, um, would you kindly, if you could, please, I will kindly ask of you, if you could me, uh, have whoever's chosen a chairman to, to reach out uh, to me, so that we can set up a meeting, uh, a Public Safety meeting with the newly, with the newly, um, appointed chairman and the commissioners and Judge Payne. Uh, but Attorney, at least, uh, let me at least try to salvage this right now, a little bit, by asking you some questions, realizing that you were so just thrown into the fire, uh, sort of figuratively speaking, into this. But, uh, can you tell me exactly, who are the five commissioners? Can you review those names with me, please, if you have them in front of you?
Yes, Madeline Fernandez.
Yep.
Norman Roldan.
Yep.
Gary Birdy.
Correct.
Albert Trangizi.
Albert Trangizi, okay.
And Robert Jackson.
Albert Trangizi and Robert Jackson, okay, excellent. Um, now, in terms, uh, I do believe the ordinance says they're going to be, be meeting monthly, and I'm sure they have not set up a date as of yet, as to when that will be correct. So that will be decided, okay, very well. And would you be tell, uh, able to tell me who has the, the terms of office, who's who? Who has, because the ordinance calls, uh, for uh, different stagger terms, would you be able to tell me who has what term?
Yes, I have that information. Um, let me put my hand on it.
Yeah, well, you look that up, I'm just gonna mention to the residents, uh, the Board of Police Commissioner ordinance calls for, in terms of office, this middle of a five commissioner, which is appointed, uh, the, uh, pleasure of the mayor. So the mayor appoints those commissioners. Uh, and I'm going to read, but reveal it on what the ordinance says. It says that, uh, the first and second appointees to the board should serve three terms. The third and fourth appointees to the board should serve a two-term, a two-year term. And the fifth appointee to the board should serve a one-year term. Annually thereafter, appointees to the board should serve a three-year term. Each term shall expire on the first Monday of April in the year the term expires. Members serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and he, and may serve on the Board of Police Commissioners beyond the expiration of his or her term until his or her successor is appointed. Uh, in other words, they have a stagger term, and it's under City Ordinance sixty-seven eighty-five. And I just wanted, you know, if you could tell me who has what.
Yes, I am looking up that information as we speak. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble accessing it in my network, so.
That's okay, that's okay. Take your time. I'm sorry, Counselor Hurst, I didn't know, go ahead, sir.
No, this actually was a question for Attorney G as well, was, I just wanted to, if, once she finds the information, if she could just clarify her role and as it relates to the Board of Police Commissioners, or if you're just sort of filling in for, for today.
Yes, so, um, I was the attorney to the, um, Community Police Hearing Board. And so, uh, again, I think, you know, we're in a bit of transition at this point because we have a retiring city solicitor, a new city solicitor coming in, um, and then some internal changes. So I am sort of filling in, um, I think that there is discussion about if I will be the attorney to the board, but, um, I don't, I just work here, so I don't, I don't have appointment powers, if you.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, so at the moment, I, I have been working with the board on getting them up and running. Um, I've been working primarily, which is something that we'll talk about, as you, you pointed out, you saw the agenda for tonight's meeting. So we'll be talking about the rules and regulations that pertain to how hearings are conducted and how discipline, um, how, how discipline sort of happens in the department. And I've been working with them on the legal aspects of that, as well as just getting them up and running as a, as a board.
Gotcha. Uh, Counselor Perez?
Thank you, um, Counselor Davila. I just want to ask, can we have the organizational chart, um, um, and, um, given to all counselors, so we could understand, um, what you just explained of the year terms, and we know who's who, thank you so much. President Davila.
Uh, thank you. I liked the way it sounded, President Davila. Uh, thank you, um, Counselor Perez. Um, Attorney G, were you able to locate that information?
Yes, I was. Um, and I can also follow up with that information if you would like. So, um, the one-year term, excuse me, Madeline Fernandez, her term expires on the first Monday, everyone's term expires on the first Monday in April. Counselor, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Madeline Fernandez, her term expires, um, in April twenty-twenty-three. Um, Commissioner Gary Birdy, his term expires twenty-twenty-five. Commissioner Robert Jackson, his term expires, um, April twenty-twenty-five. Norman Roldan, his, Commissioner Roldan, excuse me, his, um, term expires April twenty-twenty-four. And Commissioner Trangizi, his, um, term expires April twenty-twenty-four as well.
Very well. So in recap, it seems to me that, uh, Dr. Gary Birdy has a three-year term. Uh, Mr. Robert Jackson has a three-year term. Um, Ms. Madeline Fernandez has a one-year term. And, uh, Commissioners, uh, Norma Walden and Albert Trangasi has a two-year term, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Very well, thank you. Um, Counselor Perez, you have a follow-up question, or would you hand this yourself?
No, 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 I'm, okay, it was answered.
Good, good. Um, Attorney G, would you be, um, able to tell me, to tell us, uh, in, in terms of a support structure? Because, uh, the commissioners are going to be engaged in a lot of work, uh, a lot of critical, important work. Uh, what kind of support structure would they have?
So at the moment, I've served as their point of contact for, um, what they need from the city. Um, and the superintendent's office has also, um, provided them with some support. I can generally speak about that, but I'm not in that office, so I can't necessarily, um, you know, comment on what, I can't speak concretely, but, um, the department has issued the, um, the, the department has provided them with, um, the technology that they will need.
You mean the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay.
The Police Department has provided them with, um, the technology that they'll uh, files and things of that nature. Um, I've gotten them up and running on their, um, city emails and things of that nature, as well as what they'll need to access the building. Um, we have, as I mentioned, um, tonight we'll review the rules and regulations that they'll use to guide them in terms of, um, providing them with, um, how they'll, how they'll handle the discipline, how they'll handle hearings and things of that nature. Um, and, uh, uh, personnel at the Internal Investigation Unit has also been, um, providing them with the information that they'll need as well. Just to understand sort of, for example, um, what a file consists of, or, or things of that nature.
Gotcha. And, uh, did they choose a location, whether they're going to be meeting, are they going to be meeting in a police station, then the city, uh, City Hall, or? Are they going to rotate?
The meetings, um, we, I believe that the plan is to meet at City Hall. However, um, the difficulty comes with, um, number one, just sort of availability, and number two, not availability of the, um, of the mayor's conference room, Route two oh five. And number two, um, the technology that might be needed to review a particular case. Um, so the, not to get too far in the weeds, but when we have a case that's, um, that involves body-worn cameras, for example, accessing that information can be, um, difficult depending on the location, um, as well as, um, the availability of, um, oh, my lights just went out, I'm sorry. Um, just as Counselor Hurst mentioned about, um, the, the meetings and inaccessibility, um, and the times that the meetings will happen, um, sometimes, um, the meetings may have to happen at a certain time of day, depending on the availability of officers. Because as you may or may not know, if you call an officer in to attend a meeting, you'll have to pay them, you might have to potentially pay them overtime, um, as well as the department sort of coverage needs. So just, um, making sure that those factors are considered when meeting.
Correct, correct, good. Uh, now, um, they do have to comply with open media law, uh, and I believe that's a minimum forty-eight hours, right?
Forty-eight hours, uh, required for posting the agenda.
Correct. I, I will make, uh, if I could, I might make a suggestion of this, something that hopefully, I will convey to them, but, but hopefully can be brought up today. Uh, given the sensitive nature of this board, given the sensitive, uh, community, um, the sensitivity with the community on this issue, because this was a very hard, long process to get here where we are today, uh, that, uh, it might be beneficial to everybody. Uh, that instead of doing forty-eight hours, we do a seventy-two hour notice. I think that will be helped to create more transparency, uh, that, um, we're here to create the best Police Department in the country. Uh, and so that will be my, my humble suggestion, that instead of forty-eight hours, uh, they, they are here as part of the rules. Uh, a seventy-two hour notice, I think that will go a long way, uh, to turn around the perspective and, and that mistrust that unfortunately uh, still exists in the community. So I, I do have a plethora of other questions, but I think these questions are more appropriate, uh, for a later meeting. I will call another meeting, uh, on this. Um, does anybody have any other questions, um, from the councillors? Nobody has follow-up question for Attorney G? No? Okay. So, um, again, Attorney G, I would like to thank you for being here. Uh, I, uh, again, I express again my frustrations, not a you, aim at you. Uh, but, uh, the process, uh, and, um, I take my job seriously. Um, I represent sixteen thousand people in my, in my world, and one hundred fifty-six thousand people in the city of Springfield. Um, when I ask questions, it's, I'm not trying to do a gotcha question, or trying to do, to get anybody. I want our city to be the best. And I want to be clear. If you are, and you work at City Hall, and you don't like to be, ask questions from the City Council, I would highly suggest you find yourself another job. Because I will continue to ask questions regardless of who the somebody is. Again, my questions are with the purpose of creating collaborative. I see the Public Safety, uh, uh, helping the Police Commission to the best of abilities from where we can. Uh, they're going to have an extremely difficult job, and, uh, we, at least from my perspective. Uh, as Chairman of the Public Safety, my goal is to, uh, help them achieve their, their objective. With that being said, nobody cancels my meeting. Nobody cancels my meeting. And so I will call another meeting at the appropriate time. And so, with that being said, if nobody has any question, the time is not twelve forty-four, it was to go on like fifteen minutes. But if nobody has any other questions, um, I believe, or Attorney G, do you want to have any final thoughts, anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Davila. Um, I, again, I want to apologize for the miscommunication. Um, I will, as I stated, I will certainly take ownership. Um, I advise the commissioners that they did, that they did not need to attend this meeting because I thought that it was canceled. So I will certainly own that, I apologize for that. Um, I would, as I previously stated, I would suggest that, um, the meeting, the rescheduled meeting, um, happen a few weeks out to allow the commissioners time to, um, sort of get in the groove of things. Um, I have revised, um, Rule thirty-two, and they will, um, review it and ultimately decide on changes and amendments to it, and whether or not they'll adopt it. Um, and then I think it's going to take them a few weeks to actually utilize it to determine if it, uh, is appropriate. Um, and so I would just ask that you sort of give them the time to do that. Um, and, and also, um, again, I'm happy to, to come before the council and answer any questions. Uh, again, I, I would just, um, ask for your patience during this transitional process. And keep in mind that two of them have not, um, I have not worked with two of them on the, the board before. I know this is a new board, but I have not worked with two of them before, so I think they'll need some time.
I see, uh, I see Counselor Hurst, uh, if you give me a second, Counselor Hurst, you have your hands raised, your hand raised. But Attorney G, what's, uh, Rule thirty-two, refresh my memory?
Rule thirty-two is from the Rules and Regu, the nineteen eighty-one Rules and Regulations, which are cited in the Ordinance. And Rule thirty-two particularly relates to, uh, hearings in disposition of discipline and complaints against officers and things of that nature. So I've taken the liberty of, um, updating that and sort of bringing it to what I think is a, could be a, a present workable solution, um, and presented it to the commissioners for their consideration, um, to see if it's a, a workable process that, that will work for the commission.
Right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Hurst?
You, um, you actually asked my question. I guess I would ask Attorney G if, um, can you send us the original version of Rule thirty-two? I know it sounds like you're going to make, you guys are in the process of making changes to it. Uh, can, can you send us the original version, if at all possible?
So the, the version that I have is, um, it, it's the entire, um, nineteen eighty-one Rules and Regulations.
Okay.
So I can, but I can, I can, um, send it to you with a page citation.
That'd be great, that'd be great, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't muted there. Uh, if no more questions, uh, from, uh, the, my fellow counselors. Uh, Attorney G, uh, nothing else you want to add before we close?
Uh, no, just one last thing I did want to add, when I mentioned, um, just updating it and bringing it to present. For example, Rule Thirty-two refers to things like asking for a social security number on a complaint form, um, which the diversity officer in me says that is no, no, because that would speak to citizenship. And somebody may not be a citizen, but they still should have the right to file a complaint. So, um, taking out things like that, just updating it.
Very well. Um, very well. Now, with that being said, uh, we will, uh, call this meeting to, to close. Uh, Attorney G, I will be, uh, reaching out, uh, to reschedule. Um, and yes, I will give the, uh, board, uh, a little bit of time, uh, a couple of weeks, uh, before we have a second meeting, at that time, I do have expectation that the whole gang will be here, uh, literally speaking. Uh, and so again, Attorney G, thank you, thank you for, uh, jumping in. Uh, and with that being said, if you have other questions, this meeting is adjourned at twelve forty-eight. Thank you, everybody, you have a good day.
Thank you.
Good bless.